PZ 1833, ZC and SPA, Latadori Development LLC. Request for modifications to curbing at Hartford Healthcare property located at 100 Perkins Farm Drive Mystic. Assessors map 150, block two, lot five, zone GDD. The applicants are here to request modification of the curbing at the Perkins Farm site. What they're looking to do is amend the curbing from standing bituminous to kid cod bituminous, which is more sloped, less of a reveal, less height to it. Now, in the plans that are submitted, they show where they're looking to do this in two different areas. There's the green in the side or areas that are not near any sidewalks in which the town doesn't have an issue with it, whether it's sloped or not sloped, is it an issue? Where it's orange on the plan, those are areas next to sidewalks, and the sidewalks were approved as bituminous sidewalks. So, the town's concern was that there wouldn't be enough of a difference there, either visually or height-wise, for pedestrian safety. So, the town engineer's comments had stated that. The curbing has already been stalled throughout in the Cape Cod Manor in order to treat their erosion and sedimentation issues there. They felt it was the best to do that. So, a solution for the areas with sidewalks still has to be developed and worked out. This is still on the agenda tonight to at least gain approval of the, what the town feels are acceptable curb modifications before the winter in the green areas on the plan, the areas that are not next to any sidewalks. And Mr. Latadori is also here, if the commission has any questions. So, as far as our recommendation, it would be to...
Prove that we're in the green area.
Right, right.
It's okay to approve within the green area and then the yellow area. Open for discussion and the hell of it.
Right, there'll have to be ongoing discussions with the Department of Public Works.
You weren't around the parking lot, didn't you read the area, correct?
That's right.
Okay, that's all I'm reading. The only thing it is is along the road.
Along the north side of that access road and also the parking lot islands.
So, Keith, can you explain how this happened? Why did the green area, why is there already a modification of the curb without coming back?
Well, you know, they requested this, but you know, from what I understand, the paving contractor went ahead and did it because of drainage and erosion concerns. That basically there was erosion going on, installing the curb helped prevent that.
Will you come into?
David Latadori, the owner of the Perkins Farm property. How it happened, it was designed to make, it was a design decision driven by my paving contractor to control stormwater flows down the road. It has a Cape Cod curb, so there's a little bit of a swale on the side, which directed all the flow to our stormwater management basins and also our catch basins. The issue with that is that the way that curb is designed and it integrates into the walkway, it only allows for a three-inch reveal instead of a six-inch reveal. And that's the issue that we're still working out with the town engineer. Originally, when the Greenway Development District was developed, it was designed to promote low-impact development standards. The Cape Cod curb is one of them. And that's what we have kind of going around the entire property at the moment. It wasn't my ideal choice. The more I've reviewed it, I actually think it's a better design criteria because I think it'll withstand plowing in the long term, and I think it will control stormwater management runoff because we do have some slopes to this site. But it's an issue we will have to deal with. I think in the long term, it's a superior curb to what was originally designed.
Did you work with the town engineer?
We worked, Peter Lynch, Lynch Paving, has worked with Barbara McCrell and Scott Deletta, but this was a decision that he put together. And according to him, he's done this work around town for the Public Works Department.
Would you be on that?
I'm trying to get a hold of you. So, the green stuff is okay and that's...
It's already been done. All of it's been done.
That's six inches high, is that correct?
Not six inches high, it's sloped. It's only three inches high, but in those areas, it's fine.
Okay, so the green stuff, the green lines look like the stuff on the white in the picture. Is that recorded?
Yes, yes.
I would also mention that we have a six-inch curb around all the islands, which I think are highlighted in yellow. But that would be approved by the town engineer because it has a six-inch reveal, and it's more than what we had originally designed in those locations.
You approved that?
Yes.
And those won't change. The only thing that might change is the yellow stuff on the far side of the road.
Along the left side, not that road.
Correct, along the left side.
The only thing that might change is the yellow, the butts on sidewalk on the...
North side.
North side of the road. Or anything else will stay as it is.
Can you come up here? Just so we, we got this. Everything is beaded now, or does anything not have a curb?
Everything has a curb, but a rodent is up there.
Okay.
So, there's a binder course, not a top course around the entire site.
Okay.
We're having to put a top course there.
All right, okay. And so, just so I get it, Gardner, this will not change? Any of the yellow around the parking does not change?
Correct, we have a six-inch reveal there and it's kind of a Cape Cod style modified curb.
Okay. This is the only part that the town engineer is concerned with. And I'm pointing to the north here, correct? Everything else, the town engineer is absolutely fine with, right Keith?
That's right.
All green, so it's only this. Now, can you just orientate me where this is on the property?
Come up and go over the road line.
Ah, okay, okay, so this is the answer, about it. Right, so the highway's over here.
So, we were required as part of our group of bring a walkway from the building all the way down to the road line. And this will eventually extend all the way up to the front.
Okay.
So, we have to make sure that we have the same type of curb for the entire campus so that it's consistent. You know, one of the issues is, is that if we tear out that curb on the north side of the road and we put in a different style curb, it now won't be consistent with the curb on the other side. Because we'll have a Cape Cod style curb. It's just, it's...
Better.
It's more of an aesthetic. It could also be a liability issue, but this is a private driveway. I think it's important to remember that this portion of the walkway, people aren't going to be walking down that road. And it was an issue because on the other side of this, we have some drainage that we have to take care of, so it's kind of a tight area for us to work in. And unfortunately, when we design these things, I've been before you guys for the last three years, but we start at kind of the 30,000-foot level. I think when we first started, it had a satellite map, you know, and now we're getting down to inches. And although not ideal, it's acceptable, you know, for me and my liability.
Grass area in between?
There's not a grass area between the sidewalk and that driveway.
They haven't put the sidewalk in yet?
No.
You could put a little grass strip and then that would designate it?
And we looked at that, the problem is there's a swale on the other side. So, it goes over. And the issue is if we modify that curb, when we have a snowplow come in, it could create, it could damage the curb. Where now it's all integrated together, so it'll be one standing scene from the curb all the way to the sidewalk. So, what we thought, in order to kind of fix this three-inch reveal along this walkway, is we could create a landing pad at the crosswalk from the building. So, where the, at the end of that sidewalk, at the northeast corner of the building, there's a sidewalk going from the built, building over to the, across the road to the sidewalk. We could create a landing pad. I also think we could put in lane striping so that it can identify to cars that there's a curb there. Right now, there's no striping at all. We also could put in reflectors so at nighttime, people could see that coming up. But it is kind of a low-impact design. So, it's kind of a more rural-type design instead of a commercial curbing. And the only issue is, in order to reconstruct this and redesign it, we'd have to tear up, actually, the entire road. We'd have to tear up the north side of that road, unfortunately.
Can I just ask another question? So, I understand, I kind of am going along with what David said, asked the question about a grass strip. And I understand there's a swell on the other side, but on these construction sites, couldn't you get in there and flatten it out so it's not an issue?
The swale was already constructed so that we could control the stormwater coming down the side of that road.
There's not room for a six-inch strip or something?
And we looked at that, but the problem is, we're already at a four-inch sidewalk. So, we'd have to reduce, I mean, a four-foot sidewalk. And we'd have to reduce it probably further, which wouldn't really provide a lot of access. And my issue, of course, if we put a six-inch strip there is, am I going to get weeds and everything else? It's going to be difficult to maintain that lawn there, especially during the winter when we get all the salt and everything else up on there. I think it's also important to notice too, that that sidewalk, it raises two inches over the course of it. So, actually, the sidewalk is slanted, so we do get around five inches towards the end of it. But we're still dealing with a three-inch reveal as it's adjacent to the roadway.
Yeah, I just, it seems, it seems, first of all, there's not going to be that much foot traffic there.
No, no.
And, you know, as long as Scott's happy with it, they're happy with it, I'm happy with it. You know, I mean, you know, if it were downtown Mystic, I'd be concerned. In the middle of nowhere, who cares? As long as Scott's happy with it, David's happy with it, I'm happy with it.
Around the building, we have a six-inch curb. It's a concrete curb, it's a concrete sidewalk. And as we get further up into the site, we have more room. So, actually, I could move that sidewalk in, which I would prefer because I think it's more aesthetically pleasing. But I'd like to get at least a couple of feet of grass there, just so I can maintain that grass.
Let me just ask you two more questions. Why isn't this parking area highlighted in yellow? This, this...
It's a handicap.
So, it has a different curb line?
That has a different curb.
Okay.
That has a curb with a six-inch reveal and...
Okay.
A big beefy curb, it's going to withstand plowing, there should be no issues there.
Okay. My, um, and you did say you thought that these would withstand snow plowing so they wouldn't be all chipped as you move forward years from now, correct?
I mean, I've had the fortune or misfortune of inheriting older properties that are 30-plus years old, and every winter, I replace all the asphalt curbing. So, this is, it's like a slanted curb. It would be really impossible to break away.
Okay. And then my only other question, suggestion, I don't, I don't know, is, has painting been required or talked through for the curves at all?
I don't know if that's a discussion that was had on this site. Town engineer was away, there wasn't much time to discuss different options with them.
The only reason I even bring it up is, you know, somebody not seeing the curb because it's slanted, I'm not sure how it would look, if it would look like a big white stripe or a big yellow stripe, but from a safety perspective, I just, I don't know how that's usually handled.
Right, right.
I have no problem with the change in the design and the slope, but I just think maybe...
Yeah, it might need something like that, just to visually make it pop out at night.
That's the only...
I'm fine with that.
And I, I don't know, I don't know if that would look terrible.
Paint it, yeah, paint it.
I, I don't know, if it would make it look very industrial, I don't know.
If you go down Grand Long Point, west shore, you have small little white lines along the entire side of the road because there's no curb there. So, that's what I was envisioning.
Oh, I can see that, yeah, okay.
It's not a big curb, it's just a standard line stripe to identify the edge of the road.
Yeah, that makes sense, okay.
Or we could do reflectors, I mean, which is less...
Whatever they were, we're making a motion.
So, it seems like, since scribbling down a motion to what Mr. Young said, it was something like approve the curbing modification with the exception of the north side of the driveway, the north side of the driveway shall be, excuse me, the curbing on the north side of the driveway shall be modified at the discretion of the town engineer to address pedestrian safety.
Yeah.
Cool. Yeah, so move.
Second, you ready to second?
Second.
Hold on a second. Aye.
For old business, we have item 8A, PZ 1920, Cam Mitchell and Regina Strand, coastal area management site plan review application to accompany future zoning permit application for the demolition of a single-family residence and detached garage and the construction of a new single-family residence with detached garage and onsite septic system. Property located at 18 Skiff Lane Mystic, assessors map 80, block two, lot one, zone RA 20.
I thank you for the record, my name is Norm Tebow. I'm a licensed professional engineer, and I'm here representing Mitchell and Regina Strand here this evening for construction of a, of a new home on Skiff Lane on Mason's Island. It's in the, there is an existing house there, which they are proposing to demolish. The original house was built in 1954. And currently, it is unoccupied. They are, they were using it as a, as a summer residence, and then ultimately, they, they moved into it. But now, as they're, as they're approaching the point where they're going to be constructing a new home, the house is actually being remediated because, because it was built in 1954, there were some asbestos issues in the home and so forth. So, currently, the home is unoccupied. What we've done here, we've actually, and I don't know how well you can see it on my plan, but I sort of highlighted these areas in red where the existing garage and paved driveway in the house is. And we're actually reducing the, the impervious area on the site as a result of this development. So, in fact, we've got about a 16% reduction in impervious area. Another thing, I think too, as far as the coastal area management requirements go, is that, you know, this home that was, that was constructed in 1954 had a very antiquated septic system on the site. It was just a, a tank and a dry well kind of on the side of the, of the site. We do have, we have designed a new septic system, which is in compliance with the public health code, and has been approved by Ledgely Health Department as well. So, we have, you know, discussed this quite a bit with your zoning officer and also with, with Mr. Deletta, we actually had a meeting. One of the things that, that I think has been sort of the last issue that we had to resolve here was the fact that the, the 15 elevation, which is the, the 100-year flood mark, is a portion of a basement in the patio that's actually below that. Originally, it was shown at elevation 13. We, we did raise it another half a foot. But I think it's important to note that it's sort of, it's, this, this lower elevation in the basement area is, is kind of encapsulated because the, the perimeter elevations around the house and up into this patio are all greater than 15. We are, the patio is just going to be a little, small walkout area from the basement with, with views of the sound. So, in order to address any potential water that might get into there, there's a, there is a, a small strip drain, a perimeter drain around this little patio area with a, with a drain pipe with a check valve on it too, so that if there were the extreme event when floodwaters were to rise up to the site, this check valve would keep water from back flowing back toward the house itself, so. And I think that was, that was kind of the, the final issue that we discussed and based upon the meeting that we, that we had with Keith and Mr. Deletta, that was more or less the resolution that we came up with on that. The CAM application has been submitted to DEP's Office of the Long Island Sound Programs for input to the consistency. A couple of the things that they wanted us to address, number one, they suggested for roof water would be to put in some rain gardens. So, we've showed locations of a couple of rain gardens that we could do upon, on the site. They also recommended slash requested that we do some sort of a pervious surface for the driveway. So, the, the site plan does say the proposed driveway will be either a pervious surface such as crushed stone or gravel or some sort of a pervious paper material. So, we took that into account as well. I believe all of the zoning comments as far as staff have been resolved. There was a little bit of a, there were a couple of issues, one with the floor area ratio. Typically, with this zone in, in the RA 20 zone, it's, it's 15%, but this is a pre-existing, non-conforming lot of record. It does not have 20,000 square feet. Therefore, your regulations state that we are able to account for a floor ratio of 20% instead of the 15%, and we have met that requirement.
How do you answer the town engineer's comments on the 13th of September?
Okay, located, in this case, the construction of the house. Well, originally, okay, how we handled that, originally, what we had was, we were actually carving out the terrain to, to enter the basement. And if I may, I'll, I'll kind of go over to the, to the drawing for a second to show you.
Walkout basement, according to the series. So, there's a patio there, the elevation is 13 feet four.
Thank you. So, the, the patio elevation is 13 feet four inches. And what we were doing originally was sort of carving out the terrain over here so there would be a walkout right from the basement at that, that 13 feet. Mr. Deletta's concern was that that was introducing this flood into the basement. So, what we've done in lieu of that is to, is to not adjust the grades over here, keep that elevation at 15. And in fact, you can see a couple of spot elevations of 15.4 and 15.7 that would be located here. And what they're actually going to do is just have a few stairs going up to that elevation. So, even though that elevation will be at 13 feet four inches, the, the elevation around the perimeter, the minimum elevation would be at around that 13, 13 point, uh, points, I'm, excuse me, 15.7. And as you can see, going around the perimeter of the home, the, the elevations continue to rise as we get toward the front of the house. So, that is the way that, that we address that by, by not introducing that flood into the basement area.
Have he approved of all this?
Well, that was our, that was our discussion. He did not see the final plan, I believe he's been on, he was away this week, I believe.
That's right, he was, he was away last week. We have it as a recommended stipulation that he review the final plan. It appears to address what he talked about, but he hasn't commented on it.
As I said, we did have a meeting with Scott and Keith. And, you know, we came down and we, we talked about the alternatives and how we could address this and, and meet the flood requirements. That was the direction we chose.
Is there going to be a fireplace in the bathroom in the basement? Is that, am I looking, is there a fireplace and a ba, a bathroom in the basement as well? Am I looking at the floor plan for it, please?
Honestly, I don't know, let me...
I'm looking at what, what you handed out to us.
Sheet A 104.
I believe, I believe the basement is, is going to be substantially a workshop.
I'm looking, I'm looking at drawing A 1, plate A 104.
That goes onto the patio.
Which, which for some reason is not in my sets here, so let me take a look at that.
All right, I'm just looking, it looks like there's a fireplace and it looks like there's a bathroom on...
Yeah.
See where I'm looking there?
Yes, yep, I do see that, mhm.
I know there's a fireplace above it on the main level, I didn't know there was one in the basement as well.
I, I believe so.
It looks like there's a bathroom down there too.
There is, okay.
Don't know how to read floor plan.
All right, we have also, also with me here this evening is Mr. Peter Giordano, who's actually the, the contractor. And he just did confirm that there is a fireplace in the bathroom. Okay, basement, yes.
So, it would actually be sort of a living area per se?
A portion of it, yes, yes.
So, if I'm understanding this correctly, you're going to have steps, 15 feet, you're going to have steps coming down into the patio. So, it's almost like the patio is on a lower level from the grass, right?
Correct, correct.
They're going to come down, you're going to have the patio, then between the patio and the sliders, the doors, you're going to have a drain.
It's actually, the, the drain is actually at the bottom of the stairs, yes.
At the bottom of the stairs, okay. The reason I'm asking is, I'm, I'm looking and it, it says it's 33 and a half feet to the, it looks like the, the bottom of the second floor.
That 33 and a half is the, is the elevation? It's not the height from the ground?
Oh, okay. Okay. So what is the overall height of the building?
How about from the ground?
The ground?
Yeah, I know.
It varies throughout. You've got, the height of the, from the, to the, to the second floor from the wall is 33.6. So if you're looking at 13.6, you're going to have 36, 20 feet compared to the height of the roof, you've got another 12, 13 feet. So if you're looking at, from the, from the water, if you're looking at, excuse me, from the water side, you've got approximately, approximately 33 feet from the water side because you've got the basement walkout over there. But from the roadside, it's, it's about 12 feet lower because you're actually seeing only the two stories from the roadside.
And we, when it comes to zoning, we measure the height from average finished grade to the midpoint of the sloped roof?
And what would that be?
So, well, the maximum is 30.
33.6, I believe is what it is.
It's 33 in the zone, isn't it?
Yeah, 30 is the maximum allowed in the zone. So as we measure the height, it's only a little over 26 according to the plan here.
All right. It's the, it's the average, the average grade around the building, which is 18.6.
Page 88.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. So it says 26.
Thank you. That's, that's what I was looking for. Thank you.
26, 1 and 3.
And that's, you're saying that's the average?
Maximum. That's the maximum.
No, it's not the maximum. It's not the maximum.
It says there's a maximum height.
What's wrong there?
Why?
And actually, yeah, it looks like they are overestimating the height because they're measuring to the very top where...
Average finished grade.
Average finished grade to the midpoint on this plan is only 21 feet.
Okay.
Well, what we did is when we, we took the average finished grade, I went around the entire perimeter of the building and because they're anywhere from, anywhere from 21 feet down to that 13, 13 and a half feet. But, you know, the, the, you know, like the 21 feet might have been half the building. But then as you start getting to the lower elevations, there's a lower, there's a portion of them. So I didn't just take the lowest elevation and the highest elevation and weigh them and just average them out. I took the weighted average based upon the actual length of that, that elevation. So if you had, for instance, 20, if you, if I had an elevation of 21 feet and it went around 45 feet of the building, I would take that as, as, you know, 21 feet of the 45. And, you know, and the 13 may only have like 15 feet. So here's the weighted average.
Great. Thank you.
I have no problem with that one, town engineer.
Yeah, I agree.
Do I hear motion as application? We have some stipulations.
Motion to approve PZ 1920, CAM Mitchell and Regina Strand as submitted with the... Stipulations as outlined by the staff.
You ready to second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Pursuant to the general statutes of the State of Connecticut, revision of 1958 and all amendments thereto, and pursuant to the zoning regulations of the Town of Stonington, Connecticut, the Planning and Zoning Commission hereby gives notice that it will hold a public hearing at the Stonington Middle High School formerly known as Mystic Middle School, 204 Mystic, Connecticut, on Tuesday, October 15, 2019 at 7:00 PM on the following applications. PZ 1925 SUP Robert DeLisa and Lisa Kunz, special use permit application for the operation of a commercial dog kennel, property located at 34 Anguilla Brook Road, Pocatuck, Assessors Map 47 Block 1 Lot 2 Zone GBR 130.
On public hearing, first we'll hear from the applicant, know anyone in favor of the application, and then we'll hear from anyone opposed to the application, and then we'll hear from any general comments. The applicant has a right to rebuttal, and then we'll have a staff report on it. The applicant, please.
Yeah, we've been always told not to mess with that, but...
Well, come forward, moving kids forward.
Somebody talk to you?
I'll talk into the microphone so you can hear my voice.
Please, we'll try to talk to them too.
Okay. Okay. I'm Robert DeLisa. My wife Lisa Kunz could not be here this evening.
It was a little emergency with a lost cell phone. So we are applying for a special use permit to turn a kennel that has, that was built with the property by the previous owner who built the home in 1979 as a, and it was used as a private kennel. Her name was Leslie Wall. She's a, I met her. She's a wonderful lady. And she trained retrievers and to go into the pond. And she would take them on show, show dogs, like show dogs. So she, it was a beautiful, it's a beautiful piece of land, sits on 32 acres. And we, when we bought the house, we bought it a year ago, just about a year ago today. And we wanted to, you know, bring some dogs. We have two dogs of our own, but we thought, hey, let's continue this on and see if we can, you know, have some friends or some people. But, but we thought that maybe we can, you know, make a little money as a business. So we're very entrepreneurial and we decided to start a little doggy daycare. So that's what we have right now is a doggy daycare, which I checked and it doesn't require any special licensing at this point. So it was, been suggested to us that we do overnight boarding by some of the people that bring their dogs in. So we thought about it and we thought, okay, let's give it a shot. So I checked with the town in terms of, the state in terms of licensing and it seemed like it was a process and I didn't think it was going to do it at first, but then I was assured by Gail at the town, the town office that it was not that difficult. So we're going forward with it. So that the application that you have seen is simply to turn a private kennel into a commercial one for, for our purposes of just having the dogs having a license so we could have, we can do boarding. So that's the primary reason we want to do it. The kennel was fully functional when we bought the property. The only thing we've done is paint. We put, we painted all the chain link fences. Each of the dogs has, there's 10 contained kennels and each of them, they're right next to each other in a room in the kennel itself, which is just, I don't even know the dimensions to tell you the truth, but it's probably about maybe 15 feet wide by maybe 40 feet long. And the 10 kennels are side by side. The dogs have like, there's a, there's a metal sheet in between each kennel, so the dogs don't really see each other. But they have plenty of opportunity to socialize. So we, we, what we're doing right now is we're socializing the animals and having them come out and we have them on leashes and, you know, take them up for walks. We have plenty, plenty of room to give them walks. So they really don't stay in the kennel very long, a few hours. So they're not there, you know, all day, all night. We have, we have somebody that comes over part-time and she is, she works at Petco and she knows dogs very well. She's trained, trained in dog training and she's great. So my wife Lisa and, and the other Lisa, there's two Lisas that are running it, they're basically running the daycare and want to continue to do it. So we're only going to have a maximum of 10 dogs, the very most, probably average anywhere between five to eight on any given day. And that's, that's what we're going to do.
Have you read the Ledge Light questions on this application?
I did. So the, I wasn't, you know, I did consider, we did consider like any, had to do with sanitation.
Yes.
So we didn't see any issue there because currently we clean the kennels every day. And are we, you know, I'm, I'm assuming we're talking about feces or are we talking about urination? What are we talking about? What's the concern?
Liquid. What?
They don't specify.
They don't specify either. But basically this has been going, going in operation as a private kennel for years.
Yes. Since 1979, they built it.
There's no, there would be no increase from what they had before?
No, I believe she had the full kennel to 10 dogs. She just had them on property and it was, they were her dogs.
So to the 10 dog maximum, would that include your, your dog daycare as well as the overnight?
Yes. We wouldn't have more than 10 dogs. We wouldn't, we wouldn't try to overcrowd the kennels. We want each dog to have their own kennel. We really want it to be a boutique kind of kennel. We're not really trying to grow it. It's, it's really, it's private land. We want it to be, you know, just, we kind of keep, want to keep it a well-kept secret.
Okay.
We don't want to really open it up and, you know, have signs every, that's not what our intention is. Our intention is to really word of mouth and when we're at capacity, we're at capacity and that's it. And we're going to be very picky in terms of who we take in. We do evaluations of all the dogs.
And that could be a stipulation?
In terms of?
Maximum number of dogs on the property is 10 at any time and that there's no signage? Thank you.
Okay.
I'm looking at the overview kennel. Where exactly is the kennel in the house? Are they right next to each other? Is that the general idea?
Where exactly is the kennel in the house is what he's asking.
Where's the kennel related in relation to that? There's a picture in the staff report with a circle around it. Now is that the kennel and the house?
So if you see a picture of the house, it's kind of shaped like a horseshoe.
Okay.
Okay? So the front of the house is the...
Oh, that's the kennel?
Yes.
Yeah, it's the, it's, as you're going, looking at the house, it's the right-hand side. So it's facing, I guess that's east.
So the kennel is the little building beyond the house?
Yeah.
Oh, see, that can see because of the house.
No, it's not beyond the house. It's not, it's, it's include, it's part of the house. That's a shed right next to the house.
The house, the kennel's attached to the house.
It is. It's, it's part of the house. They are both in the yellow circle?
The silver roof thing is the shed.
That is correct.
Okay. I was just trying to get it.
You don't want too many dogs in the house.
And you can't see it from the road?
No.
No.
No. No, it's very private.
Any other questions? And no questions?
No questions?
No more. No. Anyone else like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone opposed to this application? Any general comments on this application? Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
Nothing really to add. No issues from our end. You know, our regulations do have some rules for commercial kennels, which this meets. The decisions tonight are the waivers for the special use permit and the special use permit itself. What I heard recommended as a stipulation was that the maximum of 10 dogs at one time with no signage.
Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
We'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I hear a motion as an application?
Motion to approve the application as presented with the stipulations added by staff.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote. I have it. Motion, application approved. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Second, or motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we'll sign your papers now.